Good morning. At this time, we'll call to the Board of County Commissioners meeting for Thursday, May the 3rd. Welcome, everybody. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Schaefer.
Here.
Commissioner Allen.
Here.
Commissioner Kleck.
Here.
Commissioner Osterhaus.
Here.
Commissioner Ashcraft.
Here.
Commissioner Brown.
Here.
And Chairman Ilert.
Here. All are present, we do have a quorum. Would you join with me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Would ask those who are present, if you have a noise-making device, if you could turn it to silent mode or off, so it's not interfere with our electronic communications as all of our meetings are streamed. And so if you're ever away from this building and want to watch what goes on at the commission meeting, why, the opportunity exists for you to do so. We do have four presentations, recognitions to make this morning, so we'll begin those I'm going to ask Tony Booker and those who are with him to join me this morning at the podium. Tony is involved in charge of correction operations and... You know, our corrections department, I think when that name comes to mind, automatically we think of the jail. Well, there's a lot more activities that occur and responsibilities that are placed upon our correction officers. And so this morning, we want to recognize and honor their work with a proclamation. And I'm going to ask Tony to share with us the range of activities and responsibilities that our correction officers are engaged in every day of the week. Not only offering protection to the community, if you will, but also working with those who are completing a sentence and will be back in the community and efforts that are ongoing to make that reentry successful. So, Tony, thank you very much. And thank you to all of those in our corrections department. I'll give the proclamation to you. And if you want to make some comments, please do so.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Chairman. I appreciate it. And thank you, Board of County Commissioners and the county administration office. It really is a privilege to be able to accept this proclamation because as a corrections professional, it really touches me to know that we're being recognized for the work we do. As the chairman mentioned, you know, there are certain things that folks don't know about corrections and some of the challenges that we face, but also, as a corrections family, we know that we're providing a service and it's not just a job for us. I'd like to kind of introduce the folks that we have representing us today. Rob, I'm sorry, and on behalf of Robert Sullivan, our director, who wished he could be here. But we have Ted Jester, who is our Director of Juvenile Service Center. We have, let's see, Jennifer Porenza. She's a youth correctional advisor. We also have shift supervisor Norman Gunn. We have YCA, which is Youth Correctional Advisor, Brandy McGill. We have a substance abuse counselor, Leslie Ruggles. We have a shift supervisor, Logan Campbell, who works at our residential center. And then we also have a correctional advisor, Michael Hicks, here representing our department. As you can see, we have a wide range of individuals that work in our department. It's really difficult sometimes when you see folks and they ask you what you do for a living. In field of corrections, you never follow that question with, "And you look familiar." So, one thing about, one thing about being a corrections professional is we provide a service. Some of the things we have going on, we like to collaborate. One of the things that's going on with our juvenile service is a major collaboration with ACT, the Adolescent Center of Treatment, which is a collaboration with mental health. Because of the populations that we serve, we have to have a collaborative effort, and that is one example of something that not only our county does very well, but as a corrections department and juvenile services, we're looking forward for the future to prevent folks from coming to the adult side. Certain things are going on with our adult program. Not only do we provide probation services and correction services at our residential center, but now we're looking at how we can better people to not be caught in the system. And one thing we definitely look at is education, employment, and home stability. So, right now, we have quite a few programs going on. We have a welding certificate program that individuals can get their certification in welding, culinary arts. We just partnered with some of the local construction companies to do a construction program to where they teach six weeks of classroom skills and then also six weeks of a paid internship with companies. So, those are the type of things that we do as corrections professionals. Not only providing safety for the community, but then providing a future and a way of life for the citizens of our community. So, we don't really look at it as a job. It's a career and it's a service that we can provide. So, once again, I really appreciate the recognition and thanks for having us.
Tony, thank you very much for those comments and thanks to all the correctional professionals who are represented here today, and we appreciate your commitment very much. So, now, if we could kind of come together, why, we'll have a photo. And that, I would think that today happened in the job. You need, you need to be in front. You need to be okay. There you go. Yeah. It's like Kenny Gordon. Yeah. We always back in the back. Okay. Thanks, guys. Appreciate it. Thank you for being here. Thank you. Thanks. Thank you very much. And next, I'm going to ask Tim Dewis to join me. Tim is Director of Mental Health Services, and we just heard Tony explain one area that our mental health service agency works with in the corrections department. And they provide, our mental health agency is really one of those basic community services that are so important to a wide, wide spectrum of our community. The last report that I had, and this may not be, it'll be pretty close, is that our mental health center serves something like 10,000 clients a year for a wide range of mental health services, all the way from children to adults and to those who are in our correctional facilities. So, it is important work and we appreciate, Tim, your leadership, the advisory board who works with the commission in directing our mental health agency, all of those volunteers who make this important service possible. So, Tim?
Thank you.
I'll present this to you, and if you'd like to make comments, why, please do so.
I will. Thank you. Well, I wanted to take the opportunity to thank the chairman and the board for this proclamation and recognizing May as Mental Health Awareness Month. It's interesting that we made these comments and that Tony mentioned the partnership that we have with corrections. This morning, I had breakfast with a couple of members of my advisory board, Scott Shutey, Michael Seitz, Aaron George, and Maury and I met, and we were talking about the overlap and the matrix of what, what mental health gets involved in and how can we continue to develop that from school districts to law enforcement to the correction system. And so, we will continue, and I have clear directive from the advisory board that this is really the direction that they want to continue to move in. So, today is an opportunity for us to recommit our community to increase the awareness and understanding of mental illness. And in the past, we've had someone come up and share their story, but decided to do something a little bit different today. I provided each of you a project that we're working on. It's called "The Humans of Johnson County Mental Health," and I have copies that I'll set over here if anybody wants to grab one. But these are two individuals that we are serving who are in recovery and have wanted to share their story with our community, to talk about their resilience and how they have overcome the struggles of mental health. So, this is another way that we can communicate to our community what we do and the importance of that. So, again, I thank you for the opportunity to speak before you today, and I thank you for your ongoing support. Thanks.
And thank you. We're pleased to recognize National Mental Health Awareness Week, a month, and also in doing so, recognizing the professionals that you work with as well as many volunteers that make these services possible. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. (applause) And next, I'm going to ask Bill Baker to join me at the podium.
I have a proclamation recognizing the work of the William Baker Festival Singers, a very, very active group in our community. And I became well aware of their talents and their activities when they were performing at the countywide Martin Luther King Celebration at the Johnson County Community College. Terrific, terrific performance. And I know that they've performed and provided opportunities for, to generate support for various community activities. And across the nation, they perform. And so, on their 20th anniversary or 20th birthday, wanted to recognize the talents of the many volunteers who perform in this choir. And Bill, I'll present this proclamation to you, and any comments you'd like to make and introduce the folks who are with you, why, please do so.
Twenty years ago, I came to Johnson County, Kansas, to make it my home. The little red pickup truck with Georgia plates on it came to Kansas. And every day, when I walk my dog in a safe neighborhood and my children go to wonderful schools, I thank God for Kansas, and I thank God for Johnson County and for bringing me here. And I thank you, Chairman Ilert, and the county commission for the care and the work that you do to make our community wonderful. And that's what we're trying to do with the Festival Singers, is to change lives and destinies through the power of music. Music of timeless beauty and worth. And thank you. We're humbled and we're inspired by this proclamation and by your support. I have with me Jamia Sale on this side. Jamia is a longtime resident of Johnson County. She is our Executive Associate Director, the second-in-command of the whole organization. We have 600 participants in three states, based in Roland Park. And also Nicole Winnie, who is a, going to be a new resident of Kansas, coming to Kansas City inspired by the opportunities that you have helped make possible, to make this her home for her continuing education and profession as our student intern with the Coral Foundation and the Festival Singers. I guess the one thing that sticks in my mind, this thing about quality of life and resonating that quality of life from Johnson County, Kansas, across the nation and to other places through the work of our organization. My mentor, Robert Shaw, the legendary conductor, said, "If we have a responsibility, if we believe that there is a God that loves and creates, that God is still about His work of loving and creating. And when we sing and when we do His work and help other people, we are continuing that creation and that love by making infinitely livable our yard of space and our inch of time." Thank you for your support of us in that effort. God bless you.
Well, thank you very much for those comments, and I would encourage anybody who has an opportunity to attend a concert or an activity of the Festival Singers, please do so. You will not be disappointed. Outstanding. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. FestivalSingers.org. That'll be fine.
Very good. Ladies, if we could have a photo, that'd be fine. You want to hold the proclamation?
Yes. Thank you. Thank you very much. And next, I'm going to ask Josh Clark, who's...
Oh, actually, Gary Kearns.
Pardon?
Oh, okay. Yeah.
Well, both of you, stand up here. Stand up here. I have a special proclamation honoring an activity of the Home Builders Association. Josh is the executive director thereof, and it's called Hammer Out Hunger, right?
Yes, correct.
And the parade of homes is ongoing currently or will be?
It's currently going, yeah.
Okay. And so, this is an opportunity for those who attend the home parade to participate with the HBA in providing food sources for Harvesters. So, for those who are out and about viewing the parade of homes, don't forget to help them hammer out hunger. So, we'll present this proclamation, and thanks to the organization and your efforts for making this activity possible. And if you'd like to share some comments, why, please do so. All right.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioners, for having us this morning. My name's Gary Kearns, and I'm president of the Home Builders Association in Kansas City here, and we serve as the voice of the housing industry all over the metropolitan area. Comprising approximately 500 member companies, the HBA represents the industry that contributes more than $1.5 billion to this Kansas City economy and supports more than 20,000 jobs. So, it's not a small little organization here. So, many of you probably already familiar with Harvesters. I want to touch on a couple items here, but during the school year, 100,000 children in Harvesters, 26 county service area, receive free and reduced meals through Harvesters. A lot of times, these are the only meals these kids get. During the summer, when there are no school food programs, a lot of these kids just go hungry. They don't, they don't have any way of getting the food. So, Harvesters has a summer kids' cafe program, which offers breakfast, lunch, and dinner five days a week at 76 different sites here in the Kansas City area. Last year, Harvesters kids served 114,280 meals to children in need during this summer program. This need is why the Home Builders Association of Greater Kansas City decided to partner with Harvesters. And so, we established a goal a few months ago that we was going to try to raise $21,000, which results in 63,000 meals during this spring parade of homes, which goes on through now until May 13th. Just to update you on where we're at on our goal, we have met our goal. We've really met our goal. We've approximately raised, I don't know the exact numbers after last night because we had our awards ceremony, but I think we're well over 150,000 meals.
Wow.[1122.23][1122.23](applause)
So, we've actually raised all the meals they need for this cafe program in the summer. So, to do so, we have, we created this challenge. We got three teams, Missouri South, Missouri North, and of course, Kansas, and we're raising the monies for the, for the summer. But anyway, we greatly appreciate the Johnson County Commissioners recognizing this important cause and promoting the HBA's efforts for the next two weeks of Hammer Out Hunger Days in Johnson County. So, again, thank you for your time and support for hammering out hunger.
Well, thank you. Sure. Well, gentlemen, thank you very much, and thanks to membership of the HBA for their support, and you've done a terrific job already, so with what, a couple more weeks to go or 10 days, why, we'll look for more success. Great, great job, great idea. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yeah. I should mention, Mr. Brown is a member of the HBA. Thank you for bringing this to our attention, a past president thereof. At this time, we'll turn to the public comment portion of our agenda. If there's anyone present who would like to address the commission on an item which does not later appear on the agenda, would welcome you to the podium. State your name and address. Limit your comments to five minutes, and we'll be glad to receive that information. Is there anyone who would like to address the commission this morning? All right, there being no one to be heard, the public comment portion of our agenda is concluded. I do have two or three notes for the record. I will be signing an agreement with the city of Olatha for design of a stormwater management project known as 167th Terrace and Black Bob Road. Also, assigning a partial release of easements for the consolidated main sewer district due to the removal of sanitary sewer lines at 9300 Renner Road in the city of Lenexa. And finally, assigning administrative resolution number WD-18-022, enlarging the privately-financed sewer district and providing for the assessments of all applicable fees, charges, and levies of the consolidated main sewer district in the vicinity of 24001 West 97th Terrace. That concludes notes for the record. Before we move to the consent agenda, there is on our agenda today a committee of the whole meeting. That meeting, my suggestion is to be continued to next week, May 10, due to notification issues, and so I would like a motion supporting that. Mr. Kleck?
I move that we continue the committee of the whole meeting relative to the fire departments to next week.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to continue the committee of the whole, originally scheduled for today, to next week's meeting, May 10. Any questions or discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Schaefer.
Aye.
Commissioner Allen.
Aye.
Commissioner Kleck.
Aye.
Commissioner Osterhaus.
Aye.
Commissioner Ashcraft.
Yes.
Commissioner Brown.
Aye.
And Chairman Ilert.
Aye. Motion carried. So, if there's anyone here for that committee of the whole meeting, you're welcome to stay, but it will be held next week. Moving to the consent agenda, would the clerk please read the proposed consent agenda items?
Item number one, consider approving the April 12, 2018 business session minute. Item number two, consider acceptance of the Emergency Solutions Grant, ESG, and approve the reclassification of reserves in the amount of $99,000 and authorize the mental health center to add one FTE for a case manager position to provide homeless outreach services. Consider authorizing, item number three, consider authorizing a contract with Constellation New Energy Gas Division, LLC, for natural gas management service in an amount not to exceed $600,000. The agreement will be for a one-year period with four additional one-year renewal options. Referenced state of Kansas contract 40873.
Is there any commissioner who would like to have an item considered separately? Is there anyone present who would like to have an item considered separately? There being no one, it's back to the commission. Mr. Osterhaus.
Move that we approve the consent agenda as read.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded to approve the consent agenda as presented. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Schaefer.
Aye.
Commissioner Allen.
Aye.
Commissioner Kleck.
Aye.
Commissioner Osterhaus.
Aye.
Commissioner Ashcraft.
Yes.
Commissioner Brown.
Aye.
And Chairman Ilert.
Aye. Motion carried. Moving to the action agenda, item number four.
Resolution number WD-18-013, conduct a public hearing and consider authorizing funding for the design and bidding phase services for the Rock Creek, Martway, and 75th and Noll pump station improvements project, MT-M1-CO-74, in an amount not to exceed $1,142,200.
Public hearing is open. Ms. McCarrick.
Good morning, Chairman and Commissioners. Let me get this up on full screen here. Susan McCarrick with wastewater. This request is for design and bid phase services for three of the oldest facilities in our service area. They are up in the northeastern portion. I've got a map up here on the screen. We have one pump station, the Rock Creek Pump Station just off Row Boulevard, and then there are two other facilities, Martway and 75th and Noll, and those facilities operate only during wet weather. The equipment in these facilities, several pieces of equipment in these facilities have reached the end of their useful life. Many of these pieces of equipment are actually date back to the 1960s, and so these improvements are needed to improve the reliability of the facilities and help us prevent the risk of sanitary sewer overflows and basement backups. Once the project's been designed and we bid it, we'll return to the board for construction phase funding and for contract award. We included this project in our financial plan that was presented most recently to the board in May of 2017. Be happy to answer any questions.
Questions? Mr. Ashcraft.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, I had the opportunity to visit with Ms. McCarrick yesterday, and the need for the replacement upgrade makes perfect sense, given the criticality of this system. I just would like to ask her to elaborate on, though, the selection process of Burns and McDonald versus other firms that might have been considered.
Sure. So, Burns and McDonald is one of the engineering firms that we have under our term and supply contract for treatment and pumping. They were part of a group of engineers that we have that were competitively procured under the county's request for proposals process. We selected Burns and McDonald based on their qualifications to do work of this type. Their rates are part of that competitive process, part of the RFP process, and so that's how we selected them. They did the study for this, for what we're getting ready to now do, design, and so we decided to continue with them since they did the study so that we could move forward quickly and most efficiently with the design.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions? All right. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone present who would like to address the commission on this item? If there's no one to be heard, public hearing is closed. Do I hear a motion? Mr. Osterhaus.
Move that the board adopt resolution number WD-18-013, authorizing funding for the design and bidding phase services for the Rock Creek, Martway, and 75th and Noll pump station improvement project in an amount not to exceed $1,142,200.
Second.
A motion has been made and seconded to approve resolution number WD-18-013 in regards to the wastewater improvements as noted. Any further questions or discussion? Mr. Ashcraft.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, I am supportive of this effort. I still have hesitancy, though, when it comes to the transparency of the selection process because to describe the selection from this pool of qualified firms as a competitive process just makes me a little bit uncomfortable because I'm not sure that when the actual projects, or I don't always see how when an actual project is awarded or designated to a firm, that the competitive components of it are fully expressed in these briefing sheets. And Ms. McCarrick and I have talked about this. So, having said that, I will support it, but I wish we were able to, to find a way to, to develop and express that a little bit more fully in the briefing sheets.
Okay. Any other comments? to the wastewater improvements as noted. Any further questions or discussion? Mr. Ashcraft?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, I am supportive of this effort. I still have hesitancy, though, when it comes to the transparency of the selection process, because to describe the selection from this pool of qualified firms as a competitive process just makes me a little bit uncomfortable, because I'm not sure that when the actual projects, or I don't always see how, when an actual project is awarded or designated to a firm, that the competitive components of it are fully expressed in these briefing sheets. And Ms. McCarrick and I have talked about this. So having said that, I will support it, but I wish we were able to find a way to develop and express that a little bit more fully in the briefing sheets.
Okay. Any other comments? All right, clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Schaefer?
Aye.
Commissioner Allen?
Aye.
Commissioner Clicka?
Aye.
Commissioner Osterhaus?
Aye.
Commissioner Ashcraft?
Yes.
Commissioner Brown?
Aye.
And Chairman Ilert?
Aye. Motion carried. Next item, number five.
Resolution number WD-18-016, conduct a public hearing and consider authorizing funds for the construction phase of the Shawnee Mission-Turkey Creek Contract 39B, Turkey Creek Wastewater Treatment Facility Clarifier Equipment Repair Project located at the Nelson Complex in an amount not to exceed $1,037,800, increasing the total project authorization amount to $1,710,324.
Public hearing is open. Ms. McCarrick?
Thank you, Chairman. Susan McCarrick with Wastewater again. This request is for construction phase funding for the repair and replacement of Turkey Creek clarifiers. Turkey Creek is part of the Nelson Complex. The Nelson Complex is located just off of I-35 and Lamar. You can see I-35 here in the northwestern portion of the map, and then Lamar is running down along the west side of the map here. Nelson Complex is actually two treatment facilities co-located on one hillside. This project is for primary and final clarifiers. They're located inside these two red boxes here. The clarifier equipment is critical to the wastewater process. It removes solids as part of that process, and so we need to maintain those and keep them operational so that we can make sure that we're meeting our permit requirements. On October 26, the board had previously authorized funds and awarded a contract for the purchase of the equipment. We wanted to purchase the clarifier equipment ahead of time because it had such a long lead time, so we've made some temporary provisions at the treatment facility to keep the clarifiers going until we could get them installed. The construction portion of the project was bid on March 13. Award of the contract is the next agenda item. This funding request includes construction funds, engineering, construction phase services, contingency, and project administration. The HDR, the firm that designed the project, will provide construction phase services for us. We did include this project in our financial plan, which we presented to the board most recently in May of 2017. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
One general question, and you just spoke to it. These items that we're considering this morning, in the public hearing and otherwise, have all been part of your finance and capital improvements plan, is that right?
That's correct, sir.
Previously approved?
Yes, correct.
Okay, thank you. Other questions? Mr. Ashcraft?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ms. McCarrick, I suspect that there's a technical consideration here, but we've had growing conversations about the Nelson Complex and its need for substantial overhaul, rebuilding, reengineering, and that is an active discussion, and I don't know if we have a particular date set, but I know it's scheduled and it cannot be postponed. My question is, the timing of this expenditure, is this the best use of $7.1 million, given the fact that in a couple years, knock on wood, or however long, the facility will have a substantial, if not complete, overhaul? Help me understand spending this when we're going to do the major overhaul in a year or two years, three years, whatever it might be.
Yeah, so that's a great question, because we do know that we need substantial investment in this facility in the near future. It's still a few years out. This is a $1.7 million investment to ensure that we can continue to meet our permit requirements. Any investments that we're making now are part of that study, we're considering as part of that study that we're actually doing right now in terms of, can we retain this type of facility to move forward with the renewed facility that we're looking to, we're developing that facility plan right now? So we, the temporary, we've tried to Band-Aid, in particular, these clarifiers, and we've Band-Aided them just about as far as they can go. So in order to continue meeting our permit requirements, these components are critical to be able to do that. The large investment for Nelson is pushed out beyond our Tomahawk treatment facility, and so we really just can't wait that many years in order to try to continue to Band-Aid these things together. These particular pieces of equipment, you know, I don't want to get too engineering on you, but, you know, they're critical to removing solids as part of the process, and we can't, we can't be discharging solids into the streams.
Thank you.
Okay?
I think I heard you say that this work would be compatible with, or would be considered as one of the components for the larger review.
I can't, I just can't speak to whether or not these facilities will be retained. That's part of what we're studying right now, but certainly they'll be considered.
Okay, all right. Any other questions? Again, this is a public hearing. Is there anyone present who would like to address the commission on this item? There's no one to be heard. It's back before the commission. Public hearing is closed. Mr. Osterhaus?
I move that the board adopt resolution number WD-18-016, authorizing funds for the construction phase of the Shawnee Mission-Turkey Creek Contract 39B, Turkey Creek Wastewater Treatment Facility Clarifier Equipment Repair Project located at the Nelson Complex in an amount not to exceed $1,037,800, increasing the total project authorization amount to
Second. Motion has been made and seconded to approve resolution number WD-18-016 in the improvements in regards to the Nelson Complex wastewater system facility. Any other questions or comments? There being none, clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Schaefer?
Aye.
Commissioner Allen?
Aye.
Commissioner Clicka?
Aye.
Commissioner Osterhaus?
Aye.
Commissioner Ashcraft?
Yes.
Commissioner Brown?
Aye.
Chairman Ilert?
Aye. Motion carried. Next item.
Item number six, invitation for bid number 2018-005, consider authorizing a contract with Walters Morgan Construction, Inc. to construct the Shawnee Mission-Turkey Creek Contract 39B, Turkey Creek Wastewater Treatment Facility Clarifier Equipment Repair Project located at the Nelson Complex in an amount not to exceed $713,300.
Ms. McCarrick?
Good morning, Susan McCarrick with Wastewater again. So this request is for the contract award of the Turkey Creek clarifier equipment replacement as we just discussed under the previous item. This project was advertised in the Olathe Daily News. It was posted electronically to the county's electronic bidding site, Ion Wave, as well as on Drexel Technologies' plan room. We held a mandatory pre-bid on February 28 to discuss the details of this project with prospective bidders. We opened bids on March 13. Seven bids were received. The low bidder was Walters Morgan. The design engineer has reviewed the contractor's bid and qualifications and does recommend them for award. Wastewater staff agrees with that recommendation. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Questions? Mr. Ashcraft?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ms. McCarrick, you probably just misspoke, but I don't believe it's the Olathe Daily News any longer.
I apologize. It's Olathe News, isn't it?
Well, that's the supplement.
There's still a section.
Yeah, the supplement on Saturday, yeah, okay. Yeah. Mr. Chairman, yesterday, Ms. McCarrick and I visited on this, and one of the questions I often ask is, how does this pricing compare to the engineering estimate? She tried to explain to me, or she did explain to me, and I tried to understand, the opinion of probable cost estimate, or probable cost that is developed, and that these prices, this price range was within those expectations. Is that, did I summarize that correctly?
That's a great summary, yes.
Okay. So having understood that, I will be supportive of this.
Okay. Any other questions? Again, is there anyone who would like to address the commission on this item? There being no one to be heard, it's back before the commission. A motion to be in order. Mr. Schaefer?
Thank you. I move, I move that the board of county commissioners authorize a contract with Walters Morgan Construction, Inc. to construct the Shawnee Mission-Turkey Creek Contract 39B, Turkey Creek Wastewater Treatment Facility Clarifier Equipment Repair Project located at the Nelson Complex in an amount, in an amount not to exceed $713,300 per invitation to bid number 2018-005.
Second. Motion has been made and seconded to approve the bid as reported and recommended to the Walters Morgan Construction, Inc. in regards to the project noted. Any further questions or comments? Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Schaefer?
Aye.
Commissioner Allen?
Aye.
Commissioner Clicka?
Aye.
Commissioner Osterhaus?
Aye.
Commissioner Ashcraft?
Yes.
Commissioner Brown?
Aye.
And Chairman Ilert?
Aye. Motion carried. Next item.
Item number seven, consider granting an exception to competition and authorizing a contract extension with Waste Management Incorporated for the disposal and removal of sludge, grit, and rags from the Johnson County wastewater facilities in an amount not to exceed $1,100,000 per year, with an option to renew for two additional one-year periods.
Ms. McCarrick?
Good morning, Chairman and Commissioners. Susan McCarrick with Wastewater again. There is no funding included as part of this request. This is for contract extension only. So as part of the transport and treatment process for wastewater, sludge, grit, and rags are removed from the wastewater, and we must properly dispose of those materials. Waste Management, which is formerly Duffenbach Industries, has been providing these services to Johnson County wastewater for years. The current contract that we have has been in place since 2013 and actually expired at the end of April. Johnson County wastewater has issued invitation for bids for these types of disposal services in the past. Duffenbach, which is now Waste Management, was the only bidder in 2013, as well as the previous two invitation for bids that we issued. Johnson County wastewater staff made several calls to several different landfill operators in an attempt to try to garner competition for these types of services and to understand what the interest in, and what the capacity availability would be in order to bid for our services. We only identified one landfill that could take all the materials that we generate. There's a limit to the amount of this type of material that those landfills can take. But unfortunately, it's located on the Missouri-Illinois state line, so that's a 470-mile round trip, and currently, we're doing three to four loads a day, five days a week. So they really couldn't be competitive in that case. Waste Management has agreed to extend their contract with annual price escalators limited to 4% per year for the next three years. The request before you is to extend the contract for one year with the option to extend it to additional one-year periods. Wastewater and TFM staff agree that this is the most efficient way to obtain these services. Waste Management is the closest landfill to our facilities being located in Shawnee. Funding for this contract comes from our operating and maintenance budget, so we have to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you. Questions? Mr. Ashcraft?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ms. McCarrick, last week, you, or I asked you about other options to pursue concerning partnering with other entities, and you said that you were on top of that, working to try to find creative solutions. Any, any thought process that you could disclose or be comfortable in disclosing in terms of maybe coming up with some other solutions, like within the next year or two? Or is this a 10-year, or is it just, quite honestly, just, just not possible to come up with another solution, given the intricacies of this disposal issue?
Actually, there is, there is an alternative to at least provide an alternative for a portion, for the sludge. In fact, we came to the board last year, and the board authorized us to do a study to look at the digesters that have been mothballed at the Nelson facility, putting those back into service. If we can digest that sludge, it can be beneficially reused on cropland. So that's, in fact, one thing that we're doing. With the larger group, with the metro group, we're meeting quarterly, and we have looked at, we've had folks come in and do presentations on different technologies that might be a possible solution for regionalizing how we handle solids in the metro area. Those obviously are much longer-term visions, and so those are the kinds of conversations. So we're looking at alternatives that we can help divert some of those costs, or save ourselves costs in the future, or at least have backup alternatives. So those are kind of some of the things that we're looking at. Does that help?
Yes, well, I commend you on, on that longer-term solution and offer you whatever encouragement I could.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments? All right, is there anyone present who would like to address the commission on this item? If there's no one to be heard, it's back before the commission. A motion is in order. Mr. Osterhaus?
Before I make the motion, I would like to say I'm still looking for a bass player for my blues band, Sludge, Grit, and Rags. I'll move to grant an exception to competition and authorize a contract extension with Waste Management, Inc. for the disposal and removal of sludge, grit, and rags from Johnson County wastewater facilities in an amount not to exceed $1,000,000 per year, with an option to renew for two additional one-year periods.
Second. Motion's made and seconded to approve the, the contract with Waste Management as noted.
Does it still have as, did you want to add that last piece in the motion? No, that's okay.
Well, you know, under the circumstances, you know, it's, this is, this is a good contract, so thank you for the immediate work, as well as the longer-term prospects for exploring workable alternatives. Thank you very much. Any further questions or comments? Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Schaefer?
Aye.
Commissioner Allen?
Aye.
Commissioner Clicka?
Aye.
Commissioner Osterhaus?
Aye.
Commissioner Ashcraft?
Yes.
Commissioner Brown?
Aye.
And Chairman Ilert?
Aye. Motion carried. Next item.
Item number eight, resolution number 021-18, and application number SW-PDP-FDP-3377-GA. Consider a request from Rose Design Build, Inc., applicant on behalf of JBS, Swift &amp; Company, Swift Beef, for an amendment to an approved preliminary and final development plan located at 461 Prairie Village Drive at New Century Air Center to allow a construction of buildings and use of property for a transloading facility on approximately seven acres, zoned PEC-3, Planned Light Industrial Park District in Section 18, Township 14, Range 23.
Mr. Leipzig?
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Jay Leipzig, Planning Development Codes. This item was before you, brought before you, and you have the Southwest Consolidated Zoning Board for a plan amendment for Swift Beef. And let me bring up the site plan for you. This is a, actually, it's a, it's a plan amendment, but it's really a reduction in the, in the use of the, of the site from three buildings to two buildings. They're also proposing a driving aisle on the south side of the property, and also relocation of the scale in the, on the site as well. And just for the record, this is not a rendering facility of any type. This is strictly a transloading facility for bone meal and bone meal products, and I'll give you an idea of the, of the type of the building. It's a corrugated metal, which, that, that design exterior is compatible with the other building on site. It's also compatible with the New Century Air Center compatibility plan, and staff is also recommending approval of this item, and the zoning board also recommended approval.
Okay, questions? Again, this comes to us, you know, from New Century Airport, and all, all boards and appropriate commissions have approved it. Is that right?
Yes, that is correct.
All right. Is there anyone present who would like to address the commission on this item? If not, it's back before the board. Mr. Brown?
Thank you, Chairman. I move to approve and adopt resolution number 021-18, and application number SW-PDP-FDP-3377-GA, approving a preliminary and final development plan located at 461 Prairie Village Drive at New Century Air Center for the reasons and subject to the stipulations in the resolution.
Second. Motion's made and seconded to approve the resolution and the application in regards to the project, the New Century. Any further questions or discussion? Mr. Ashcraft?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, a few days ago, I had the opportunity to visit with some developers in Johnson County, longtime developers, and they, to a person, expressed their appreciation to Mr. Leipzig in both his manner and his professionalism, and not on this project. It wasn't about this project, but it came up, and they were just very complimentary of you, and I just wanted to pass that on. You probably don't hear that enough, but, but good job for whatever... You probably don't hear that enough, but, but good job for whatever you were doing. Keep doing it.
Appreciate that. I would second that, Commissioner. I hear that regularly about Mr. Leipzig and, and our planning department.
Excellent.
I'll third that.
All right.
Same response.
Thank you very much. Glad you're here today, Jay.
Wait a minute, can't leave.
All right, if there's no other discussion, clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Schaefer.
Aye.
Commissioner Allen.
Aye.
Commissioner Klecker.
Aye.
Commissioner Osterhaus.
Aye.
Commissioner Ashcraft.
Yes.
Commissioner Brown.
Aye.
And Chairman Ilert.
Aye. Motion carried. Thank you. Next item.
Item number nine. RFP 2016-086. Consider authorizing a project expenditure in an amount not to exceed $293,000, $293,830 for a countywide stormwater asset management plan, SAMP, utilizing the term and supply contract with CDM Smith authorized by the board.
Yes, Ms. Kellenberger.
Good morning, Commissioners Lee Kellenberger, Johnson County Stormwater Management Program. This is a request from the Stormwater Management Program to complete a countywide stormwater asset management plan. Historically, the Stormwater Management Program's primary focus has been on flood damage reduction. However, under the direction of our new strategic plan, we are going to be, start providing financial and technical assistance to cities with system replacement, replacing things like failing corrugated metal pipe. The plan that we're going to be developing under this scope will evaluate and compile all the existing condition and inventory data that the cities have collected to date. We are going to also develop unified scoring system and risk prioritization methodology so that we can fund those projects during the greatest need, and it's also going to help us establish ongoing policies and procedures for this new element of our program. Last week, there was a couple of questions on about how we selected CDM Smith. Similar to wastewater, we utilize term of supply. We're usually utilizing a term of supply contract for this, and I'll just try to walk you through that process again and try to clear up that confusion. In 2016, we issued a term of supply, RFP, for stormwater management consulting services. We had 13 firms respond to that RFP. A selection team composed of internal and external people reranked those 13 firms according to their qualifications. As part of their submittal, the firms were also required to submit costs on an example project that we included in the RFP. So once we ranked the first, the firms, the first time, purchasing opened the cost proposals, they applied that component to their score. The 13 firms were then reranked. There was a natural break at nine firms. Those nine firms were awarded contracts. Fast forward to the item before you today. In January, we issued a request for qualifications to all nine of our firms, and we had four firms respond. The selection team met, and we, we selected CDM Smith based on those qualifications, meaning they demonstrated the best, that they demonstrated that they had the best understanding and knowledge of the work to be completed as part of this project, and they also had the qualified personnel on staff to do the work in a timely fashion. Once CDM Smith was selected, we met with them several times to negotiate the scope and the hours associated to complete that scope that we're bringing before you today, and in essence, they are acting as an extension of our, of staff to complete this work on our behalf. So with that, I'll ask, answer any questions.
Questions? Mr. Ashcraft.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, I had the opportunity to meet with Mr. Kellenberger's staff yesterday. I guess it was his supervisors, but, but Mr. Kellenberger's presence was felt, and, I meant that in a positive way. Okay. Okay, thank you. And I'm very supportive of this approach and this concept, and I think it, it'll be somewhat rough, I suspect, because it's a transition, a different way of thinking. This is a, an important step. The, the challenge I had was the process of selection. Mr. Kellenberger's description is helpful. I, I, as I expressed to your staff, the, the briefing sheet itself is somewhat thin in terms of kind of outlining that, and I would encourage you in the future and your staff or whoever does this to, to be a, a little bit more descriptive and, for, in terms of the process, and, and you don't have to write an epiphany, but a little bit more than two paragraphs for me would be helpful.
Understood.
Any other, any other questions? Anyone present like to speak to this item? If not, back before the commission, a motion would be in order. Mr. Osterhaus.
Move to authorize a project expenditure in amount not to exceed $293,830 for a countywide stormwater asset management plan utilizing the term and supply contract, contract with CDM Smith, also authorized by the board through RFP 2016-086.
Second. Motion has been made and seconded to authorize the project as noted in regards to the stormwater management asset plan. Any other questions or discussion? Mr. Ashcraft.
Mr. Chairman, I think I, I said epiphany. I should have said epistle.
Or a thesis.
Yes, definitely.
All right, there's no further comments. Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Schaefer.
Aye.
Commissioner Allen.
Aye.
Commissioner Klecker.
Aye.
Commissioner Osterhaus.
Aye.
Commissioner Ashcraft.
Yes.
Commissioner Brown.
Aye.
And Chairman Ilert.
Aye. Motion carried. Next item.
Item number 10. IFB 2018-020. Consider authorizing a contract with O'Donnell &amp; Sons Construction Company, Incorporated, for 19 miles of overlays at various locations in unincorporated Johnson County at a cost not to exceed $1,719,085.20.
Mr. PD.
Good morning, Brian. PD with Public Works again. This is our overlay annual contract. We did receive four bids. The prices were very good, as you'll see in our next companion item that goes along with this, and I'd be happy to answer any questions, Jay.
Brian, why don't you speak to the next item? We'll read it, but the connection is?
So we were requesting to add a change order to the overlay contract and add two additional miles that need overlay this year, and the savings from the good prices that we're, we're getting on the overlays, we're extending to these two miles.
Okay. So the, so the cost savings we're able to get on number 10 will allow a couple more miles, and that's the reason for?
Correct.
Action item number 11.
Yes, and at those good prices.
Okay. Questions? Anyone present like to address the commission on this item? All right, the motion would be in order. Mr. Brown.
Thank you, Chairman. I move to award a contract to O'Donnell &amp; Sons Construction Company, Inc. for 19 miles of overlay at various locations in unincorporated Johnson County at a cost not to exceed $1,719,085.20 per IFB 2018-020.
Second. Motion's made and seconded to award the contract to O'Donnell &amp; Sons Construction for the overlay program as noted. Any further comments? Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Schaefer.
Aye.
Commissioner Allen.
Aye.
Commissioner Klecker.
Aye.
Commissioner Osterhaus.
Aye.
Commissioner Ashcraft.
Yes.
Commissioner Brown.
Aye.
And Chairman Ilert.
Aye. Motion carried. Number 11.
Consider authorizing the county engineer to approve a change order with O'Donnell &amp; Sons Construction Company, Incorporated, for an overlay of 119th Street from Waverly Road to Moonlight Road in unincorporated Johnson County at a cost not to exceed $250,000.
Mr. PD.
Good morning, again. This is the companion item. I have nothing further to add.
All right, questions? Comments from anyone? All right, Mr. Brown, you have a motion? Ms. Klecker.
I move to authorize county engineer to approve a change order with O'Donnell &amp; Sons Construction Company, Inc. for an overlay of 119th Street from Waverly Road to Moonlight Road in an unincorporated Johnson County at a cost not to exceed $250,000.
Second. Motion's made and seconded to approve the change order with O'Donnell &amp; Sons as noted. No further discussion or questions? Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Schaefer.
Aye.
Commissioner Allen.
Aye.
Commissioner Klecker.
Aye.
Commissioner Osterhaus.
Aye.
Commissioner Ashcraft.
Yes.
Commissioner Brown.
Aye.
And Chairman Ilert.
Aye. Motion carried. Are there any other items?
No, sir.
All right, moving to reports and communications. Ms. Post Oak Ferguson, interim county manager.
No report today. Thank you.
All right. Legislative update. Ms. Green.
Good morning, Chairman and Commissioner. Cindy Green from county manager's office. I should have been paying closer to attention. We were near my speaking point. Just to give you an update of some things that have happened since you received your written report, the conference committee did approve a budget bill last night, so it's going to go to a vote of the House. They're busily typing it up. It's a multi-page document, but they're hoping that they get to it this afternoon, starting in the House to, to vote on it, and this will be an up and down vote on it when it comes through from a conference committee. They won't be making amendments to it. The option would be to send it back to conference committee if the House doesn't approve it, and then it would go on to the Senate. So they are under a tight wire because they have to be done at midnight tomorrow night with all legislation because of the way the Senate put in a legislative bill before they went on break. Some of the highlights on the budget bill that impact some of the things that we follow, there is repayment money in there for capers. You think, well, we have, you know, county money that's separate from state money and the school district money. It does still impact us because it takes the overall combination of those monies of how they're keeping the funds together. So we want them to be making their full payments because we've been making our full payments. So the plan is for them to make a $75 million repayment this year and then up to $56 million this year and next year based on revenue. So anything that exceeds the consensus revenue, there's a potential we'll get more funding towards it. And yesterday, they came out and said that there was an extra $66 million this year that they have found that they're getting in the estimates, so there's some good news there. There's also $60 million that's going to go to KDOT, and this money is because they've been, KDOT's been paying for the schoolchildren busing, and so this time, the school districts will be, they'll be using the state general fund to pay for that, not KDOT funds. So that's good news to have more money back into KDOT. And then they also did agree to giving raises to the state employees, which impacts a lot of our folks that we have over at the courthouse next door to us. So they're anticipating to spend $15.7 million on salary increases, and then, and that's going to be received as a 5% raise for them, and then judges would get 2%. Moving on to the school finance bill, which they found out had an $80 million error in it, they did fix that legislation, and it passed out of the House and Senate. It's sitting on the, the governor's desk to be signed. Some other things coming out of conference committee, we've been watching a bill that impacts Johnson County developmental supports, and it's in regards to federal regulations relating to background checks. That, too, is sitting on the governor's desk for a signature. And then in the regards to the transportation task force, they had a big disparity between how many members were going to be on that committee between the House and the Senate. They did come to a compromise. I don't have the details on it, but it's, came out of conference committee yesterday, and so it will be going to the House and Senate. So it looks like we will probably get that task force able to start instead of waiting another year to do that. A couple of other items in regards to, we've had a couple Johnson County delegate members that have announced their retirements. The first, which is probably not unknown to you, is Representative Scott Schwab. He is not running for his House seat because he's going to be running for Secretary of State. And then yesterday, Representative Shelley Brim out of Shawnee announced that she was not going to run again because she's going to spend more time with family. So that is my report for this week. We have communicated with our lobbyists, and they are looking at Thursday so that they can come and give you a full wrap-up report, since we know that the session is going to be ending tomorrow. So it's already that time of year. We're getting prepared for that. So I stand for any questions you may have.
Questions? Mr. Brown.
Thank you, Chairman. Ms. Green, I was wondering if, when you find out the breakdown out of the task force on transportation, I'd, I'd like to see that breakdown. Whose appointments?
I will make sure we get that to you.
Thank you.
I am glad that they're moving forward with the task force. At the council mayor's meeting last night, it was stated that there would be no money for them to spend with the, with the current trend in, in KDOT financing, but at least it's a start, hopefully, of something positive, so.
Agreed.
Any other questions? All right, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
That concludes our reports and communications. Turning to commission comments, Mr. Brown.
Thank you, Chairman. I have three or four here. I brought this to the interim county manager's attention, and I wanted to, to share it here also. I continue to receive complaints and concerns about our appraisers' office and how they are handling their evaluations on, on the taxpayer's first appeal, first blush through, and their readiness upon appeal at the Board of Tax Appeals, or lack thereof. And I continue to field those calls and those emails, and I'm, I'm growing weary of having to deal with those problems. I want to, I want the appraisers' office to run like the rest of our government operation runs. So I have concerns with that, and I'd appreciate, Ms. Post Oak Ferguson, if we could have a meeting with Paul at some time over the next week. Additionally, the Big Six district was under assault from weather last night. I'm happy to let everybody know. Everything in the Big Six is still in place. Far as I can tell, we didn't even lose any trees, although everybody was spending the evening in their basement, so you probably got to see things you haven't seen in a while. Yesterday, the chairman and I and the interim county manager, I don't think I left anybody out of that, were at the Sunflower Army Ammunition Plant cleanup update meeting with the United States Army Department Corps of Engineers about their timing and what's going on there and the progress. My takeaway from that meeting was, 2029, the Army will say they're done, and then the asbestos and pesticide cleanup can begin. So it's, according to them, it's going to be a very long while.
The project is not completed.
It is not completed and will not be for quite some time. And then, just a shout-out to my compatriots from the HBA on their award, what they accomplished with their, with their drive through Harvesters was impressive, and I'm proud to serve as a past president and a current member of that association, and I'm proud of the HBA. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Osterhaus.
Yeah, it's a few things Monday. Many of us were here for the Citizens Academy graduation, so we appreciate all of our citizens who took the time to go through those meetings, and for Ally for putting that great program together, and I know Cindy had a part, and then some other staff as well, so thank you for that. Yesterday, had the opportunity to attend, along with Commissioner Schaefer, the breakfast with the friends at the library. It was a great opportunity. I know our interim county manager there and the chairman were there before they hustled off to the, sounds like the meeting over in the Big Six, right? Yeah. So, yeah, but really great turnout, and they're doing some wonderful things with the friends, so we appreciate their work. And then yesterday afternoon and evening, had the opportunity to go and visit some of our students at Johnson County Community College, who were doing some work, really on behalf of the county partnership with Johnson County Community College and KU. Their art students and their computer science students are working together to document all of the public art in Johnson County, and it's, it's a large project, obviously. There's a lot of art in a lot of cities, but they did Overland Park, Johnson County's arts, and Leewood's art in this first iteration. Then the computer science guys are calculating all of it, documenting all of it, and putting in an app that will be accessible so those people who want to see the art and know where it's at can use this app to go find it. And so that's a partnership with Johnson County Community College, KU, and the Arts Council of Johnson County. So thank you for all those entities and all those students that were involved. And then finally, last night also at Johnson County Community College was their Student-Athlete Awards, so got a chance to go and witness that and see some really great student athletes. So thank you, Chairman.
All right. Mr. Allen.
Just real quickly, I had two very positive comments on county services last night. I had an individual tell me that a mother-in-law is in a nursing home and have questions on Medicare services and some bills that weren't paid, contacted the aging department, questions on Medicare services and some bills that weren't paid, contacted the aging department, and the individual got back to them very quickly, very polite, very courteous, was extremely expressed with their professionalism. And then this morning, I had worked with this gentleman many years ago, and he saw my name and picture in the Johnson County publication, and a similar story that he's looking for services, not for his family, but a friend that needs additional Medicaid services and stuff, and will pass along the appropriate numbers, but publications and services do make a difference, so.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Ashcraft.
Well, Mr. Chairman, since I wasn't sure if Mr. Life would be here at this time, I offered my comments during his presentation, and that's all I had.
Okay. Mr. Clica.
Mr. Chairman, I've had the opportunity to work with the sheriff's office on, on an upcoming event called Running of the Cows. It takes place on May 12th, and in the past few years, we've had some challenges from the neighbors in that area. So, it's, it's held in the far southeast part of the district, the county, and that there's been some challenges in trying to get this squared away. But I'd, I'd like to take my hat off to the sheriff and his team. They're doing, they are really taking a proactive basis with community and the sponsors and, and the event coordinators to make this event a little more comfortable for all parties involved, and I encourage those interested in an annual half marathon, come out to my part of the district on May 12th for this. Registration's underway. And yes, Mike, I wonder why this isn't my district, this is yours.
Sounds very Big Six-ish.
We'll just leave it, we'll leave it there.
Very good. I, just as a side comment, I used to, I used to run five Ks. I won't be in this one.
Including this one?
I won't be in this one.
Okay.
I saw, I saw something the other day that somebody's having a .5K. That's, that's more in my line.
Yeah, that's my speed. I want to just be assured, you know, Commissioner Brown, you're welcome to have your constituents come on over to the other side for this one.
We'll bring our bulls for your cow run.
Right. Costumes are allowed.
Thank you. Mr. Schaefer.
I had, I had to Commissioner Osterhaus's comments regarding the Johnson County Library Foundation yesterday afternoon. That was quite a deal, and back when I was doing graduate architecture, I would have done a report like that anytime other than writing a report, a, writing a report. So, it was nice to done, nice to presented, and congratulations to all involved, including the KU architectural students as well. They were there as well. So, anyway. And number two, a personal note. Two days ago, May 1st, I suffered, Janine and I suffered through our anniversary number forty-seven, so.
All right.
We're still, we're still.
Congratulations.
So, when you see Janine, tell her, thanks for putting up with me, okay? There you go. Thank you. Yeah.
All right, thank you. Well, congratulations. Just a couple of notes. On Monday, the 7th, we do have a vote canvas, 9:00 AM at the election office, so if there's any commissioner that cannot make it, I think it's a mail ballot, so one, one issue should not, should not take a long time, but if you cannot make it, let Linda know, and we can have substitutes there, but 9:00 AM, Monday, the 7th.
What's the, what election is underway?
The Soda School bond.
The Soda School bond.
Okay.
Seventy-two percent.
Thank you.
Yeah, it was a mail-in ballot, so.
Seventy-two percent.
And then lastly, we do have a committee, the whole schedule at 1:00 PM this afternoon is the first phase of our budget deliberations, so don't forget about that. We do have a request for an executive session. Mr. Allen.
For agenda review, approximately how long?
Ten minutes. Quite a few things.
Let's see where we're at. It's about 10:44. Maybe we can do this at 11:15.
Okay. I would move that the board recess its open meeting and convene an executive session at approximately 11:15 AM for a period of five minutes for the purpose of receiving advice of counsel and to preserve attorney-client privilege, and to reconvene an open session in this room at approximately 11:20 AM or as soon thereafter as the executive session may end.
Second.
Motion is made and seconded to approve the request for the executive session. Will the clerk please call a roll?
Commissioner Schaefer.
Aye.
Commissioner Allen.
Aye.
Commissioner Clica.
Aye.
Commissioner Osterhaus.
Aye.
Commissioner Ashcraft.
Yes.
Commissioner Brown.
Aye.
And Chairman Ilert.
Aye. Motion carried. We are in recess. We will come back for agenda review after a short break, and then go into our executive session. Thank you all very much.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.